Six, I think. So, um, that being said, I don't see a lot of traffic going up to that stop sign right in front of Lindbergh Elementary School. And, once again, if I had to estimate, I'd say ninety percent takes the left on First Street. I've come up, uh, First Avenue from wherever I've been at three o'clock unfortunately, and I wait for ten, fifteen cars to come past me before I can get into my alley. And the alley is what brings up my question. Are you gonna dead-end Broadway and Bar Alley? Is that what you're talking about?
The...
No.
So, the alley at Broadway would still be open. But here's the alley on Broadway.
We could still get out that way.
You could still get out that way. You would not be able to go over tonight, but you could still come out and get over to eight.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead, name an address.
I'm not to go to the speaker.
Okay.
I'm Sue Kester, and I live at First Avenue and Eighth, or Eighth Street Southeast. And I've been there for over thirty-three years. Um, I'm saying Ninth Street is what I mean. And so, I'm at the corner there, and I wrote it down and I watched today to kind of verify what my thoughts were, and I would have to agree with Don that it's about, and I said, you know, yeah. That about eighty, ninety percent, and I, safe to say, close to ninety percent of the cars that come up from the high school up Ninth Street, it's a river. That's what I think of it as, is a river of cars comes up, and that's a hill right there. They turn on First Avenue, and then it's a downhill, um, from there, and they do that corner and go down, and it's literally a river, which is why, you know, what Don said about having to wait and wait for that river of cars to go by. Um, but I really feel that not a lot of the traffic from the high school gets to Lindbergh School, and then I'm wondering why, I don't know if it's a one-way street and that's meant to be safer, I don't know why that's not in front of Lindbergh School, because I get that a one-way would be safer in front of the school. Um, but, um, and I think one of the reasons that the people do turn off is because there's the stop sign there, um, and the crossing guard, and, you know, kids with moms and school books and all that kind of stuff, and kids are wanting to get away as fast as possible, and so they're kind of scattering out of the high school exit there from the parking lot, and they're going onto several streets, and to me, that seems safer than, um, really piling onto Fifth Avenue, um, or down Third Street right there going straight ahead, um, knowing people at the corner a couple blocks up as well. That's a very, um, heavily traveled, um, intersection there too. And I guess you've answered a couple of my other questions, um, but I do see, um, the area like between Lindbergh School and the backstop, which is like right at First Avenue, there's a space there to be, um, you know, it's kind of a dead space, like if you went over there right now, um, it would be pretty much unbroken snow, you know? Um, the kids go up the sidewalk to get inside the fenced area at Lindbergh, and then, um, in the summer, the backstop and summer areas, or softball areas are used. Um, but in there, nobody has ever, in all the years I've lived there, nobody has ever used that space, um, for anything except sometimes to walk through. So, it seems to me like if you were going to do something, and I understand that, um, the right-of-way is on the other side of the street on our side, but, um, if it serves the purpose for the school, it seems to me that, that should be used from the school's property before it would be used from ours. Um, and then right in front of Lindbergh School, um, I don't know if anything was going to change in front of there, but again, there's a certain amount of space for, um, parking, um, right in front of the old wing, if you want to call it that, um, of Lindbergh School. And then just to let you know, um, day by day during the school year, um, on my street, there's usually a couple people that park on the avenue on each side, and then there's a yellow curb all the way down from Lindbergh, and then when you get to like the avenue, that's when people can start parking on the school side. And there's usually a few cars parked there during the school day, and I looked today and there was two there. Um, and then once you get to about five minutes to three, the parents start coming to pick up their kids, and there's usually about ten cars that park right there, um, which isn't, I don't think, unreasonable. It's not an excessive amount of distance that they have to walk or anything. Um, during the summer, they do park along both sides, and then again, a couple cars park on each side of the avenue, so it goes, it goes down a little bit. But, um, there's never been any problems with anybody parking there ever. Um, and I just speak to my area, but I've never seen people causing problems or anything. There's not high school traffic at that point. It's all kids and families going out to the, um, out to the fields for the different ballgames. Um, so, if there was diagonal parking, people would use it. I don't know that, it actually, the road doesn't seem to me in my area to be bad. There's no potholes, but I do see that it's down farther down, yeah. So, I, for me, what I see right now, it doesn't need to be done, in my area, but I understand. Um, but I don't see the, an overriding need for the one-way, um, or the extra parking unless it would be in the school area itself. And I think that should be looked at before, you know, doing things on the homeowner's side, so. Um, and then, yeah, I had a couple of the questions, but you answered those, so. And then, yeah, so that's, that's about it, but that makes sense.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Sue, can you give me your street address, please?
No.
Eight-one-zero, First Avenue Southeast. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Brian Mackinac, three oh eight Ninth Street Southeast. I just wanted to comment on the, the parking on both sides of the street when the kids are there. If you go there on a Saturday morning, it's great, you're seeing a thousand kids out there running around. Um, and sometimes I'll come home down Ninth Street, or night diving, or Ninth Street, I mean, and all these families are, you know, they're twelve years old and younger, and they all have little kids, and I go about two miles an hour down that road because inevitably there are two-year-old, three-year-old kids who're running across that street without looking. So, from a safety issue, I mean, it, to me, that's a nice plan if that's what's gonna happen. I think there should be some safety issue into this. Now, some of the other issues people are bringing up, that's just fine, but, um, I just wanted to comment on that, that the little kids do cross the street without looking. And like I said, I fear someday I'm gonna hit one of them, so that's just my little issue there, so that's what I got. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Um, I'm on the phone, said here, Ninth Street Southeast. All I'm seeing right now, we can sit in our living room, and even watch when school starts in the morning. And that road, our road, Ninth Street Southeast, is right on the corner, it's like a racetrack. I mean, these kids are, and adults are going so fast down that road, I can't see where making a one-way out of this, is going to make it better. I, I'm, we are concerned about kids. We can sit and watch these little kids. There's no guard, there's no school guard on that corner, there's nothing. You can watch them try and hit across that road, some with their bikes in the summertime, some with pushing their bikes, or in the wintertime, just blocking. It's a terrible thing to see, leaving when we are, um, you know, ready to block ourselves and help these kids across the street, because it's utterly ridiculous. I can't see how a one-way is gonna make it better. I think it's gonna make it worse. I think they're gonna go faster, and I think we really have to, you know, be concerned about these kids. That's what I think. And I also don't like that all the cars are gonna be part of my side of the street. I don't think part of the school, of the school side. If all that land going up the nice hill, going up, if they have these activities and so forth, that would be right on that side and one half a thousand street.
That's what the one-way is proposing, the diagonal parking on the school side.
On the school side?
Right. This would be heading south from Lindbergh towards the high school. So, all the parking is on the left side.
Okay, so then let me park on the, um, the school side.
Yep, correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I guess I'm stuck, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm doing what's my husband here, because he doesn't shake that shit on. When I am looking at sand, that, I don't have to, thank you for that, and I do appreciate that you're looking at Ninth Street, that does need some work, needs work. And one thing that I would say, as far as that parking is concerned there, why do they have to park in the road? We've got two parking lots on both sides of school, and they're empty for summertime. Why can't they park there? And they would say, if you want a park place over there, or where you gotta park, why not go into the school? If they are going to that park so they can park in school property and leave the road open for the traffic, that doesn't make sense at all. And you, uh, you said something, gonna take all the curb out?
Correct.
On both sides?
Correct.
Well, I've looked at that curb already, and more than once, and wherever it is there, the joints are bad, well, that's easy to fix, and I've seen them do that in all different cities, you just drive along and replace them with some good, uh, mortar, and they're good for another twenty years, it's gonna, and the curbs are, as far as it seems, it's too, and goes, whatever pulls through that, that crack pulls right into the sand, so it won't go underneath the blacktop. Because if you block along that, that curb, that blacktop looks pretty good alongside the curb. It's the other part that gets, that looks bad.
Whenever you get water in the subgrade, that's when it starts to deteriorate, and we've seen on other stretches of road, when the, when the curb starts to separate like it is there, it's shortly thereafter that the road starts breaking out pretty rapidly.
You're gonna have a lot of trouble as soon as you get a, a bad spot in the blacktop, and they're not gonna solve the problem by just having to put some full base in that hole, in that drag over it. You're not solving the problem, you're just wasting a lot of money and time. That road is, gotta be a blacktop, gotta be replaced. Then, like I say, you're gonna have more traffic going down East Street, so you're not having a blacktop in that, in that.
That's not, that's not part of the Ninth Street project at this time, no.
I would say that, that Eighth Street is not gonna look that, I would be looking at just doing a blacktop on Ninth Street and Eighth Street, and then have your one-way. But, uh, Eighth Street, that's rough and a cobbler, I mean, right over that is like driving all the country.
I would agree with you, Eighth Street is, uh, in need of repair unfortunately. We also have budgets that we have to, to stick within, so.
You need the curb, they've got it where it is, and that road is widening up for a, for a, a one-way, it's widening wide. And so, you still have parking area on, on, on the east side. Like I say, why are, we're, we're not getting any advantage, we're losing the ground and spending all this money. So, why not have the school pay for something? If they wanna have a parking lot for their cars in the summertime, go ahead and do the school area, you need your own for us.
Anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead.
Gaiety, eight eleven Second Avenue Southeast. I'm at the bottom of the hill. First time doing this. Uh, well, we had a couple of concerns down there at the bottom of the hill, uh, but probably first and foremost was the diagonal parking, because the cost of it just seems quite a bit. For really, I've lived there dozen years, and I don't think I've ever seen it completely filled up even in the summertime with the parallel parking. And it's really just for a minimal amount of time for a relatively high cost, I would guess, to put in diagonal parking, widening the road would cost more than it might necessarily be worth. Um, the other one I was gonna point out, I was just curious, could we, one, uh, down the one-way, could we put no parking on one side? Would that eliminate the risk for children being, crossing the road?
It's not necessarily the parking on one side as much as crossing like at the bottom of, of Second where kids don't always look before they cross.
And so, well, my first one that I just really wanted to hit though was, that's a lot of money for, I don't think I've seen that many cars parked out there in my career, or my time living there. And second, there are a lot of cars going, but I fear a one-way would, like some people pointed out, it'll turn into, we're worried about a drag strip being put in basically, because if they're going fast now, I don't think putting a one-way in will necessarily deter the problem. And also, it will, those people are gonna have to get in somewhere, so. Those are pretty much my ideas on that one, is it just seems like it's a lot of money, especially with that diagonal parking for not much bang for the buck. That money I feel could be used somewhere more effectively inside the city. So, I just wanted to state my opinion on that.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I have your last name again, please?
Gaiety, G-A-I-N-Y.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Bruce?
Bruce Mauer, since fifteen, nine and a half Street Southeast. I guess I have just more questions. I guess one of the questions I would have is, are you gonna standardize the Third Avenue, Ninth Street intersection?
We would like to, we're in discussions with the school right now to have that just one intersection or one leg of the intersection as opposed to two legs coming out there right now. So, answer that yes, we would like to.
Well, the, one of the reasons why it's a speedway is that it's a non-standard intersection in that if you're northbound, you stop at the stop sign on, uh, Third Avenue, uh, left-turning traffic has the right-of-way in front of you. There is no, if you're making up, you're basically teaching kids that, or, you know, learning to drive, that if you go to school, you can just whip into there, make a left in front of somebody, uh, you know? Whereas if there's a stop sign at the end of, uh, Ninth Street with the intersection there, you're gonna slow down a lot of traffic.
We, we would be adding a stop sign at that point as well, it's over here. Um, so this potential, this leg would be removed or intoxicated, try to remove that, so it would just be the one here, so you're right, you've got four legs going into that intersection.
Okay, so that would probably, uh, slow down a lot of traffic in the morning. Um, I guess one of the thoughts I would have is that there really is a need, I think, more for safety for the kids to have a sidewalk on the west side of the road. And if you're, uh, you know, there doesn't seem to be a lot of demand for as much di- parking as what you're gonna get there with the diagonal. I would just, you know, make a parallel on one side, use the other side as a sidewalk, and, you know, you may have to do a little, a wiggle down there at the, uh, south end, uh, you know, but that would just control the flow of traffic a little bit more. I guess the other thing would be the same thing, if you're gonna have a sidewalk down there, you should have a sidewalk at the, uh, you know, between Broadway and, uh, First Avenue, and again, that would probably make it, uh, you know, if you're not gonna take property, well, I mean, you're not taking property, I recognize that. I mean, you basically have the right-of-way.
Correct.
I mean, the lot, uh, property owners have been thinking that they actually own it all the way out to the curb, but they don't. But, uh, you know, actually where the parking probably would be more beneficial would be up, uh, in front of Lindbergh, you know, make it a one-way the whole distance. Because I think you also have to recognize at some future date, you know, what's gonna happen on First Avenue Northeast if, uh, Mindot comes in and decides that you're gonna have a, uh, you know, basically barrier down the center of the street where you can't uh, make a left out of, uh, Ninth Street Northeast onto Twenty-seven. I mean, they basically, I think from their standpoint up over here, you know, be, uh, another block north, they'll probably want, you know, traffic to flow away from Highway Twenty-seven and not onto it at that point. So, you may, uh, I don't really see a lot of reason for, uh, having a two-way between Broadway and, uh, or, uh, and First Avenue Southeast.
I think the biggest deal with that, Bruce, is for the buses in and out of Lindbergh.
Well, I think you also should convince the school maybe that they should, uh, you know, maybe change their, uh, how they access their parking and, you know, building a road, you know, instead of running out Third Avenue, run it out to Fifth Street, bring it in on First Avenue or something. But, you know, I mean, I'm sure that's gonna cost them money, but that's, uh, you know, I mean, part of the problem we got with the traffic flow is that, uh, there's gonna be a lot of, I mean, I think there's probably gonna, gonna be a lot of kids actually using it because they'll figure out that they can actually go up over the hill and get out to the car faster and get, uh, out of there faster than the people coming out of the parking lot, because it'll all back up on, uh, Ninth Street South. It does now. I mean, actually, uh, in the afternoons, what you'll find with the cackle mufflers, you'll find people who'll go out at the school, make a right, go make a left, make another left, shoot down Eighth Street, and then make a left back on the second, uh, Fifth Avenue and go around the school the other way, just so they can beat their buddies, you know, they've traveled twice as far, but their buddies are only going two blocks, are all stopped up, so they'll be cutting them off. And you can, uh, I don't know, I haven't heard one lately, but, uh, there used to be a, one guy with a cackle muffler that you could just hear do that all the time. And I actually had Joey Locken put in a, uh, stop sign at, uh, Eighth Avenue, uh, Eighth Street and Fourth Avenue, because that was an uncontrolled intersection, and it's a very, uh, low-volume intersection, except that at the school, there was people crisscrossing, and they were taking out the street sign every, uh, two years, so it was easier to put in stop signs and have them replace the street sign every two years, so. Uh, I think long-term, the school should actually, the city should actually think about, uh, moving Fifth Avenue over to Familia Lane, Eighth Avenue, and, uh, you know, basically, then the school parking lot on the south side of the street becomes a viable option. I guess the other question I had, uh, when you cut the grade there, um, between, uh, First and, uh, Second, uh, you're not gonna have to deepen the sewer?
We're not looking at changing the profile grade of the street very much, because the existing sanitary sewer kinda limits us in how much we can, we can cut that. Um, if we cut it too much, we're gonna get freezing problems with our sanitary sewers, so we're limited, uh, on that, and because we're not reconstructing the underground utilities in there, that limits on how much we can do up on the, on the surface here.
Okay, yeah, that's my question, so.
Mr. President, if I, a couple of things I forgot to add in the presentation, we are looking at moving the stop sign from Broadway down to First Avenue, um, so the traffic traveling south would have to stop at First before they continue south. And then this gentleman actually reminded me, over on Fifth Street, or excuse me, Fifth Avenue, we'd be looking at putting a three-way stop there, so Fifth Avenue would have to stop as well as the Ninth Street, uh, folks as they're turning, so hopefully to avoid that situation where somebody's trying to go around to, to skip a stop sign, uh, they would still have to stop on Fifth Avenue regardless.
Anyone else? Brian?
So, one of the questions, so, regardless of all this stuff, you're still saying the road, Ninth Street needs to be replaced, then with our repairs, continue with anything else, and when you cut the extra five feet, are you still gonna be replaced, right?
The road needs to be replaced. Um, right now, the proposed improvements are to do, you know, the diagonal parking with the one-way and such. If the council votes that chunk down or that portion of the project down, um, and they wanted us to look at other alternatives, we would have to start over with the feasibility report to get other options, uh, to move forward with it, yes.
And then if I, to start that, right, you're stalling the, you're still owing charges for the thirty-six feet, not the forty-six?
It would be prorated to the, to the residential side, correct.
Jim Kofed at one oh eight Ninth Street. Uh, my question revolves around the widening the road, is that only to accommodate the diagonal parking?
No, actually, state aid, because this road is on our, our state aid system, um, Mindot gives communities over five thousand in population funds for their, their main roads, and Ninth Street is one of our, our main roads. And in order to stick within their guidelines, um, we have to have a minimum of forty-six feet for both traveling lanes and the, the driving lanes, uh, for a state aid section. So, it's as narrow as a can to accommodate all of those activities, but that does include the, the pair, or the diagonal parking in there, yes.
How many, uh, southbound lanes would be in the one-way section?
There would be, you have to have it wide enough for two. So, you have to have one, that's gonna be a through lane, in the event, you know, there's an accident or something here, a police and fire still need to be able to get, get back. Um, we would, and I'll show you on this screen here, we would still stripe it, so you have the white fog line over here, um, to keep a single lane going through there, but if there was an accident or something here, a police or fire could still, or ambulance could still get past that, uh, going southbound to, to go around if they needed to.
So, the expansion, the, the extra five feet that you were gonna be taking westward is to accommodate getting the state aid?
Is to stay, to stick with the state aid compliance, yes.
Okay. What percentage of pedestrian traffic versus street traffic is, are you at as far as safety issues? I mean, are you at, if you're at a hundred percent, uh, the tra- uh, pedestrian traffic, a hundred and one percent gets you in the injury rate, are you now at, at ninety-nine percent of pedestrian traffic during the school exit hours per unit car traffic goes by?
In twenty fifteen, when they did the Safe Russes School Study, there was two hundred kids that said that they walked home from school. Now, we don't have the details if they went north, south, east, and west, but there were two hundred students that, that walked home, um, every day. And so, that's what we were looking at when we did the, uh, the eye-on-site visit in terms of visit, or observing what the students did with the parent drop-off and, and walking. Um, the, the conflict areas were both up on the top as well as on the bottom of the, you know, up on top here were the parking lot as well as on the bottom with the parent pickup. I know the school is looking at doing some improvements to that, they're looking at keeping the, the top up here in terms of strictly bus, uh, pickup only, and so you wouldn't have parent pickup that would force them down to, to the Ninth Street side. Um, you'll notice there's some, some yellow in here, this is a hundred percent school cost if they were to do this, um, but that would extend the, the parent pickup or the parent drop-off lane, uh, for that, because more parents would be required to pick up their students in this stretch if they were to, to implement that.
And that would not change your recommendation for width of the road?
It would not, no.
One of my concerns is again that, that the elimination of that as a northbound traffic lane will push, uh, traffic into the alley behind us. We see primarily right now, it tends to be, I think, Lindbergh-driven traffic, but I think that'll, that would likely increase. Uh, if we're changing the hazards from the street to the alley, I don't know if that's as, as, uh, good of an advantage as you might have liked. We've got little kids living in our alley, some that are coming to visit, I hate to put them at a greater risk, uh, because of increased traffic in through there. Um, but you don't have any particular numbers to, um, say that if you put down a crosswalk that was supervised at the bottom of the hill, uh, that if you had your kids crossing down there, that would improve your safety margins in that?
I wouldn't put one there. The visibility coming down that hill would not, would not be advisable for that.
But yet, that's where you said you're concerned about, some of the hazard is down the hill, so.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't market it and encourage it. You know, most of the cars right now are coming from, from the high school, and either going north or south. By having a one-way that essentially cuts the traffic in half, and so you don't have the afternoon rush, if you will, for that ten to fifteen minutes, you have the, you still have the morning folks that are gonna come down over, uh, to the high school, but those are spread out over about a half an hour or more getting to the high school.
Has the school talked about staggering their release times to accommodate, uh, getting the, the little kids out of the, the highway before, uh, the high school gets out?
I don't know. I, we're not included in those discussions, that, that's something that the school district is in charge of.
Jim, they discussed that fifteen years ago. Right. I don't know if they-
I don't know if they've done that recently.
So there's the two basic issues, one of, uh, the bituminous coverage and one of the safety. And, and there seems to be alternatives to, uh, some of the safety things that could be conceivably done by limiting parking onto the, uh, only the one side of the street. Uh, the bituminous, and, and our end of it, anyway, doesn't represent as many problems as Eighth does, uh, to my, uh, day-to-day activities. But, um, you know, that's what challenges for you guys in the public safety world is to try and figure out where the best use of your time and energies are as far as for keeping those kids safe coming in and going. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Go.
Navaglio, one oh two Eighth Street. Yes, my concern is the section on Broadway, since it's in my backyard. You've mentioned something about are you removing the sidewalks?
Let's get to it. So, no, the, the sidewalk would continue to go east and west as it is right now. Um, the only change that you would notice is this area would be converted from blacktop to green space.
So to access my alley, I would have to come in from the side of the east?
From Eighth Street down Broadway and then to the alley right here.
Okay, so that's, that block top section is completely on the east side, and now it's not on the west?
That's correct, yes.
And my neighbor to the east, they have their, their driveway there. Is that going right into, I think, blocking out their driveway now?
The, one to the east here.
They have a large driveway, they have a large, uh...
I believe their driveway comes off onto Ninth Street.
You forgot, it, it used to be able to hold two school buses inside their garage.
So, well, Greg is looking, can I have your last name again, please?
Navaglio? Just like it sounds. Just like it sounds, yeah.
Okay, so Lindbergh School is over here, this is Broadway. Um, the only driveway that comes off in this stretch is this, this garage right here. So then this driveway would be extended over to, um, to Broadway. And let me pull up that one in that picture. Yeah, I'm trying to get to it.
There's my truck is sitting there, and it's hearing my car noises there.
Okay, so right here is the garage, here is their driveway, it comes out, and then right here is how it would access off of Broadway.
Okay, the other couple of questions or concerns with the water drainage?
Yep.
Would there be another sewer put in? Otherwise, I'd have a tunneling area right in that corner.
In this corner here?
Correct.
Right now, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it, but I believe all of this drains to, to the west. Um, yep.
Block off that street, then farther to the east towards that water.
There is catch basins up at the intersection of Ninth, Ninth and Broadway right now. So there's, there's catch basins up here that would be used to collect that, that storm sewer already.
So when you block off that section, that, that area is my concern?
Nope, it would still, it would still get into the storm sewer up on, on Ninth Street.
Okay, the other concern is, uh, blocking the area right there. Out trucks don't return very easily.
True.
So will that become a giant snow bomb right there, where everything just is pushed out?
Some of it would, yes. Um, in this area, we would, would put some of the snow. If it gets too big, then we would go in there with the loader and, and remove it. Uh, we do that in other areas of the city where, you know, we have a half a block or so where it's, it's pushed out, and then we remove that snow once it gets to be too large, if there's no extra, no storage.
So ultimately, what's the point of blocking this road off? Is it just to bound traffic, so people have to take the, the one-way?
Correct, yes.
Does it still be people that will cart right along that road, if it's convenient, it's close?
True. And, and likely what would happen, you know, in terms of the parent pickup, you know, there'd be probably parents parking here, and I would suspect there's gonna be some on First Avenue. Um, in discussions with the school in terms of what they're looking at doing with their operations, in terms of looking at, um, parent pickup on this, the bottom or on the Ninth Street side, um, looking at how the vehicles would come in through here and stack in through this stretch in the bottom do, in the bottom section of Lindbergh. It made sense that this section would be blocked off, so you wouldn't have somebody trying to come down Broadway and sort of sneak in the queue, if you will, and cause disruption on this, this outlet, um, for Lindbergh. So as they come in, they would come through Lindbergh, and then they would, they could come out, either take a left or take a right. With that stop sign being so close proximity to the exit of that, um, of that pickup there, my fear is that you've got one or two cars that can go by that, that stop sign, and then this car couldn't, couldn't get out. So to keep traffic flowing through there, it made sense to try to block, block off Broadway for that half a block section, so that you could eliminate this stop sign and keep this an open outlet to that parent pickup and drop-off.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yep. Go ahead.
Good evening, Catherine Stock, seven fourteen East Broadway. Mayor, Council, thank you for opening up some valuable conversation about an issue that's been quite problematic. Um, living at our house on East Broadway for sixteen years, recently, we've finally seen traffic patterns changing for the war.